Okay, it is 5:30, time to start the meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. If you please join me in silencing your cell phones so we do not disrupt the meeting. It would be appreciated. Chris, would you mind leading us in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lorann, would you please take the roll?
Mayor Deal?
Present.
John Hodgkins?
Present.
Larry Sanders?
Present.
John Hodgkins?
Here.
To record show, we do have a quorum. Four amendments to the agenda declarations of contact, expertise contacts and site visits. Counsel?
Ms. Mayor?
John.
I have had multiple expertise contacts that I forwarded to city staff.
Thank you. I as well have received emails that also have been forwarded to staff and I believe are posted on the city's website.
I as well have received several expertise contacts and they've been forwarded to City Hall.
Lots of emails. Pretty sure they've all been forwarded.
Okay, moving on five, this is an action item. Ouch, little too hot, child. This is an action item, consent calendar approval, Mr. Deuce.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, before you on the consent calendar is our regular council minutes of June 11th and our regular and special bills is presented in the packet.
Mr. Mayor?
John.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented as.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Lorann?
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
Larry Sanders?
Yes.
John Hodgkins?
Yes.
Motion passes. Six, visitor comment, an opportunity to address concerns, no formal action, three-minute limit. Emily, before we start that, being that the item on the agenda tonight, it is still considered a land use item for A.
Yes, sir. And B is also a land use item today.
So...
Or C, I'm sorry, C is a land use item. I apologize.
We were for a while identifying those on the agenda, that it helps us to kind of identify which ones those are. So A and C are land use items.
Yes.
The public comment is not permitted.
Correct.
And even at this stage, that's still true.
Correct.
With that, anyone that wants to address the counsel?
Does B not be in there? Did we already approve that?
Did it say anything?
Yeah.
Emily, is B a land use item?
I think it's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance for the zone map amendment?
Yeah, you're right. That B is too as well.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Sir?
My name is Randy Sales, and I live at 5635 West Quillridge Street. Can I say anything about John Hodgkins' recusal?
Emily?
Yes, here.
Did you hear the question?
I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
So my name is Randy Sales. The question is, can I say anything about John Hodgkins' recusal?
As long as it's not related to the land use item on the agenda.
All right.
I can't imagine how that...
Could not be related.
Yeah, if, because the recusal is related specifically to that topic, it would then be part of that, so it's not something that can...
Well, but there's nothing, there's nothing...
I understand.
I'm not gonna say anything about the land use issue.
Right, I understand, but because it's all related, it's something that at this time, I don't feel that it would be appropriate for us to allow public comment on that. If you'd like to make comment about that, I'd love to hear your comments. I don't think that we can do it at the end of this meeting either, because it's still a land use item. And so at a future council meeting, I would welcome you to come back and to address the counsel about the topic.
So this all goes to dynamics and the behavior and the rules that run this council and that allow you to make decisions and allow people to participate in the process. And we're being blocked left and right. We can't even talk. We can't even talk to you guys. And you're the ones that are supposed to be concerned about what we think, but you are totally shackled. I would like to make a comment about the tactics to recuse John, but obviously I can't. And so even that, even that is being shackled. So you can't even consider what citizens think about what's happening here. There's something desperately wrong.
Sir, in the back?
My name is Rick Pine, I reside at 57, or 5847 Bettis Court. I'm sure everybody knows me by now, and I'm working my way through this, but we've asked for a town hall meeting for the last three board meetings. And again, the board still hasn't given us a date. As we could get answers from you at a town hall, when are we gonna schedule one? All I can do is get smirks over here, I don't get nothing here. Are we gonna schedule one?
Absolutely.
Are we gonna get it on the schedule for the board meeting?
Yeah, so I do intend to hold a town hall meeting. I haven't had an opportunity to present a date quite yet, or to plan a date. There was a community night out event last night, an opportunity to address elected officials that were participating at the community night out that was held at the high school. There were other events, but it was an opportunity. Another opportunity would also be at Rathram Days, that there will be elected officials that will be manning a booth, it's an opportunity to engage with council members. But I would, I've heard the community, I would like to hold an actual town meeting to open up, an open dialogue, to allow members of the public to come in and have open two-way discussions.
Well, I think it's kind of late now.
Too late.
That's what we're trying to let the board know, that we addressed this seven weeks ago, eight weeks ago, and then we have one of the board members that recuses himself, so we can't talk to him about it, because it just, he has no say in anything that goes on. And until the board actually says, we're gonna have a town hall, they should be voting on, putting it on hold. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got one more?
Yes, please.
My name's Harold Fabian, I live at 15533 North Stevens. I've lived here my entire life. I'm actually third generation Rathram. I'm kind of playing catch-up with this, I don't know all the details, but I'm wondering if anybody did any impact on what this is gonna cause. Our post office is overcrowded the way it is now, our school is overcrowded, we don't have the facilities to handle that people are here.
I'm sorry, sir, you're getting into items that are presenting evidence on the topic at hand, and so...
So we're gonna prove this without...
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that there's a process in which it must be followed, that this is like a court proceeding. And so there's testimony that's allowed, that's at a public hearing. There's an opportunity for the public to come in and to address issues such as that you're speaking of. Outside of that testimony process, that the state statutes eliminates or limits the ability for the judges of that process, as to how they can hear and receive testimony. So you're getting into territory that jeopardizes the process, or the integrity of the process to, as to how things are allowed to be processed through this proceeding.
I guess I don't know the fine print on how to do this, but I'm just...
It's the hear ye, hear ye days.
So, I hope you listen to the people that are here and pay attention to it.
Thank you.
I guess that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, sir.
We're not alone. Thank you.
My name is Don Wildom, and I live at 15336 Pineview Street, close to Larry Sanders, and I'm sorry about that, but... Anyway, I'm not talking about what you're doing now, but I'm talking about the future that all of us, seventy, eighty percent of us in Rathram, don't want any more of this kind of stuff. We, I've been here since 1968, born at Hauser Lake in 1940, so I've been in the area, and I liked it, I liked it. But now, I don't like sitting at the stoplight, or trying to get on the highway, or everything that goes along with all this growth. I don't like that, and I want you guys to consider that. And Larry said, and I don't know what I should say about what Larry said, but he said, "The state makes you accept this kind of stuff." And I said, "Well, if the state makes you accept it, we don't need a city council, just, let's just let the state run rampant." You know, we're paying you guys probably a total of $5,000 a month between all of you, and we'll just save that and put that $60,000 towards something else. And I think we're all fed up with it, and that's what I'm hearing these guys say, and you guys might be fed up with it too, I don't know. But we need consideration about how this stuff is going to be done in the future. We don't need 500 more houses out here on the prairie, we just don't need it. And that's what I think most of us are trying to tell you. I don't know, maybe I'm a lone wolf, but I've already heard a couple others. And the other thing I want to say is, last year we were in here about fireworks, and I don't know if you guys have done anything about it, I haven't heard any yet. I'm not against fireworks on the Fourth of July. I think you should follow what the state tells you, though. The law is, they don't shoot in town and they don't shoot up, and you guys are not following that at all. So, that's what I had to say.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Chelsea Morris, 7443 West Robin Road. Just to make it clear, I'm not talking about any specific item tonight on the agenda. I'm here tonight to remind you of something critically important. Cities like Rathram can stand up to developers and win. Across the country, courts have consistently upheld the authority of cities, counties and towns to reject developments that do not align with the zoning codes, comprehensive plans, or the interests of their residents. Let me give you just a couple examples of real-life David versus Goliath. Littleton, Colorado, after rejecting the 33-acre mixed-use project, the developer sued that the court ruled in favor of the city, finding their decision was not arbitrary and followed clear standards for open space and parking. Bahuba, California, the city rejected a massive housing development proposal on a golf course. The court upheld their denial, confirming their zoning authority and validating their reasoning. These are not theoretical victories, they are real court-tested examples of cities choosing to protect their integrity, their comprehensive plans, and their residents' quality of life, and they won. So I say this with full confidence, Rathram has the legal right to deny inappropriate development and the power to win a challenge. What makes, what takes, what it takes is courage to lead, the diligence to document, and the will to prioritize your community over outside developers. In addition, I wanted to share a quote posted on the city page, quote, "In 1979, I moved to North Idaho and immediately fell in love with the area. Then in 1983, I fell in love with my wife Laura. We have attended Rathram Bible Church since the early 80s, where I accepted Christ as my Lord and Savior. I knew hundreds of people in Post Falls, but watched it burst at the seams. The small-town feel was rapidly disappearing. I was saddened to see that happen, but understood due to the proximity of Post Falls that it was inevitable. We felt the need to move here, and after relocating to Rathram, I once had that small-town atmosphere and began to feel at home. But living here for seventeen years, I'm beginning to see that disappear. I believe that we live in one of the nicest towns in Idaho. I hear that people say that, 'Let's make Rathram great again.' Rathram is already a great place to live, and my goal is to keep it that way. With the help of our new mayor and my fellow council members, whom I have great confidence in, we can make Rathram a better place to live. I am humbled and honored to serve my community and the citizens of Rathram, and look forward to doing so for the next four years. Being a good listener is a characteristic that I work hard at," end quote. Larry, you said that you moved here to escape big-city growth. Now that you're cheering it on from the front row, was the plan always to bring what you ran from right to our doorstep, or did the view change once you got a seat at the table? Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to...
My name's Terry Keifer, I live at 16846 North Reservoir Road. I came in here last year, I think it was your first meeting after the Fourth of July, more than just a little bit upset with the fireworks. And I talked with your police chief, and I know that now we have a new police chief, and I would like to go ahead and see what kind of plans. And I don't know, yes, I'm asking the city council if they are aware of any new plans. I was told that they was gonna come up with something, and I sure hope that you go by the law. I hope that you go by the state law and try to prohibit the best you can, the illegal fireworks. We have people coming in from out of town to shoot fireworks off here, because they know that the city of Rathram's not gonna do anything. And I hope that they start doing something about it. I mean, there's lots of reasons why. And so I'd like to meet with, if the council, if you've heard of anything, anything new to try to curb the illegal fireworks, I'd like to, I'm asking you right now, what your plans are, if you've been aware of any.
So Terry, when you brought this up last year, it's a polarized topic. You have many, many people that are supportive of fireworks, of expressing their freedoms. This is the 250th anniversary of the United States. It's a pretty hard one, or a pretty difficult topic to tackle. The community seems to be pretty supportive of what it is that is allowed here, or what it is that has been, say, tolerated. From the policing side, law enforcement responds to calls for service throughout our community. Domestic violence calls are at a higher trend on Fourth of July than they are on some other days. Increased alcohol consumption, family that are gathering and things, things of that nature, tempers of flare, and so police are responding to various calls for service. That ties up resources, multiple officers required to respond to any one of those calls, and the hours of paperwork that is required after such an event. Our resources are limited in what it is that we have available to respond to such calls for service. So the police department unfortunately doesn't have the capacity to go around the city and patrol every time that there's a pop in the air. That there are complaints that the citizens can file, and if the citizens can pinpoint where it is that that's coming from, it may be something that the police department can follow up with, as far as there's a complaint about fireworks at this location, and the fire, or the police department may be able to investigate that complaint and follow up with appropriate charges if that may be the case. So that seems like the path in which, we've already identified it's prohibited by Idaho State statute. What's required then is that there be a complaint that the law enforcement department can triage with all the other calls for service that they have at the time, and can respond to, as their volume for service allows, to respond to those. So that's the process, I think, in which we have, you've already identified, it's already state statute. If it's something that the community is not wanting, calls for service are what help get that problem curbed. The police department, as I mentioned, can prioritize how it is that they respond to that with the resources that they have available, and prioritizing the other calls for service that they have to respond to at that time.
Well, myself, I kind of disagree with a couple of things that you said. Number one, you said that a lot of people in Rathram, and I was kind of guessing here that you're talking about the majority of the people, I really doubt that. Number two, you said that a complaint has to be filed, and then you would go out and investigate the fireworks if it's illegal. I mean, these people are setting fireworks off in the middle of the road. I mean, you drive down a lot of the streets, and I mean, there's areas there that's ten feet in diameter, where they've been setting fireworks off in the street. It's not hard to find out that people is doing this. And I would be surprised if it was very many. The majority of the fireworks, I don't think, I believe are set off by fewer people than what you think, but boy, they set a lot of them off. So, it doesn't sound like we're gonna be doing anything yet.
As I mentioned, there's a process in place in which, there's an avenue that's already in existence that can address the complaints.
So a complaint has to be made before you go out?
That's how the police prioritizes, that's how they respond to calls. They have a dispatch center that triages and prioritizes their call volume, felonies, domestic violence, crimes in progress, DUIs, and fireworks complaints. So the prioritizing what it is that they're responding to, felonies, misdemeanors, and infractions, and figuring out what is it that they're going to respond to first, second, third, and triaging the calls in which they receive. If the police department receives calls for service, that the police department is required to respond to those calls, to do the best that they can to facilitate action or to investigate where it is that that complaint is coming from. So there is a process in which is in place that can address your concerns.
Yeah. By the way, the previous two speakers, I agree with them 100%. I was born, raised here in Rathram, and illegal fireworks was not permitted when I was growing up.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else that would like to address the counsel?
Hello, Brian Morris, 7443 West Robin Road. In Rathram, Idaho, so quiet and small, residents cherish the calm above all, but corporate greed with its growth-hungry eye could turn our sweet town into a city's loud cry. From peaceful to busy, with progress shoved, we lose the quaint charm that the locals all love. City council, our hope, stand firm against the greed. Keep Rathram small, that's the fight we all need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen of council, good evening. My name's Matthew Sherman, I live at 6653 West Connor Street, Rathram, Idaho, 83858. Mr. Mayor, I was at the Encounter Church here when you're running for your territorial race, and I voted you in, and part of when you were there, you made a statement that you would do everything possible to not let Rathram grow into what it has become, you know, you wanted, said you wanted to keep it small, we all cheered for you on that. So, the metal of a man is tested when faced with insurmountable odds, but that man can overcome those insurmountable odds if he seeks the almighty God first. Why suggest, sir, if there was time for you, seek God, take his counsel, he'll strengthen you, sir.
Thank you, Matt.
Amen.
James Thornton, 5234 West Twin Lakes Ave. I've been in attendance at the past few meetings and spoken as well, and I guess I just want to make a general comment to the good turnout from the community that's come here tonight, and I know that they're passionate about decisions being made here. I want to just, for those who aren't aware, what I've come to learn is that you guys have a comprehensive plan that's being redrafted this year, and that that is an avenue for dealing with a lot of the issues with growth and the decisions being made, the impacts that have been considered, all those sort of things. And we had a pretty productive conversations last week with James and Emily, what I felt were addressing a lot of the questions that I, the public, had, and maybe just a moment, if we can have it, for James to talk about, just introduce what that plan is and maybe outline the timeline of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the counsel?
Hello, everyone, my name's Justin Ago, I live in Cootney County, and I'm here with some concerns about group participation with the police department and some of these state and local programs you have going on. Recently, I sent you guys an email earlier, and I appreciate if you take a look at it, I'm not gonna go over it right now, because I don't think you've had time to think about it all, but I've lived here my entire life, my parents and grandparents are from here. And we have some problems with the Cootney County Sheriff's Office and the state patrol fabricating investigations, which is what I sent you in the email. So, in there, the run-up to that was I had already testified about the juvenile, which officer was pulling him over, and where they were going to be pulled over. I went through the process with the Idaho State Police, the Idaho State Police claimed, so this was a Post Falls city police officer for everybody else, out on Twin Lakes Road. So, ISP claimed that he was doing a DUI emphasis patrol. Their employer claims that he wasn't even on duty, and they didn't, weren't patrolling with DUI emphasis. The lieutenant, and I believe as a captain, might have been a corporal with the Idaho State Police, went on to provide me with emails that they are on DUI emphasis patrol, went as far as sending me links to the quarterly press reports about how great the success was. My point is, is they lied about the entire thing. There's no, the people start thinking that there's some other investigation going on, there's not. They have a history of doing it. I brought this up to Bob Norris at one of his town hall meetings, and Bob Norris looked at me and said, "Okay, we'll look into it." Who's the head, you know, highest law enforcement official in the county. And of course, he didn't look into it either, there's no, it's not going on. Now, my point is, is that there's two things that are really super, incredibly important here, is, at the beginning of all that, when, you know, we're all the bosses of the Idaho State Police, and you guys, you guys are elected to take care of everybody's business, they look straight at all of us, any of us, and then lie through their teeth. If you lied to your boss at any other job, you're fired, and that's all there is to it. It's a habitual problem, though, so there's that syndrome. At the beginning of the day, there's a problem where they flat-out don't respect us, any of us as citizens. And this is like a 10- or 15-year thing, and that one problem never gets addressed. And you can take anybody, it's our human nature to defend ourselves. So, we look back at like the last six years of North Idaho history, and you can tally a lot of public events that were simply because people were ignored. And, you know, we have a system, you guys have addressed that here tonight, it's public comment, and there are rules for all those things, not, they can't be on the agenda. Those are the rules, it was supposed to be taken care of in a different meeting. My point is, is that we're the only people following that. When we put people into law enforcement, they're not following it. And so I documented that for some of you guys, and we really need to think about pulling out of these participation programs, if, because they're ran by the state police and by the Cootney County Sheriff's Office, you're putting your officers into, as an employer, a bad situation where the people that are running the programs are mis-running them.
Justin, I've reached a three-minute time limit. I am curious, though, you're talking about our police, and you're referring to Rathram Police? Participation?
Yes.
What are you referring to?
In special investigations and special DUI emphasis patrols, the people that are in charge are lying about, I mean, that's, you guys, that's a cover-up. They're covering one police officer's absolutely illegal activities that Idaho State Police has...
So you're asking that Rathram Police not participate in emphasis patrols?
Yeah, you guys, if you, I mean, you can stand up for yourselves and not participate in it, because they're not respectful to your community, they're not respectful to any of us. You have a responsibility to protect your citizens against everybody, or promote their well-being for the better of them. well-being for the betterment of the community, and the Idaho State Police and the Cooney County Sheriff's Office are not doing that. It puts you guys and your officers in a, in a bad position.
Okay. Thank you, James. Or Justin, I'm sorry. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Oh, there she is. Just one last one there, huh?
My name's Brigitte Masterpalo, and I'm at one two seven seven five North Farley Way. Um, as we're not allowed to speak about Voldemort, um but I would like to speak on the citizen's safety in general. So I don't know if any of you remember the Idaho train crash that happened about two or three years ago, Palestine, Idaho, Palis- no, not Idaho, sorry, Ohio, Palestine, Idaho, Ohio. Uh, they had a major train crash, it had hazardous waste in it, it destroyed the area. They had massive fires, I mean, it was huge. I'm wondering if the city has thought about, our train tracks go through quite a few places here. If we have a major incident like that, or heaven forbid, a fire, something like that, has the city thought through our safety as citizens with having this many people coming into our city? How are we gonna get out?
Yeah, so the city and the county participate in uh emergency management planning, and the train derailment is one of the the topics or the area of focus of uh that emergency planning effort, um and with contingency plans and things about how um incident command is established, about roles and responsibilities, um about how uh those risks are mitigated, um how they're contained, how they're responded to, all of those kinds of things are things that uh the county and even the state uh participate in a collaboration of of emergency management to ensure preparedness of that natural emergency or disaster and and several other, uh not natural disasters, but several other emergencies that that may uh threaten the safety and well-being of of our communities.
Right, but how are we gonna get out? That's my question. Like, I know that they're there for that, but have we thought about this many people coming in and how many cars are gonna be on the road? 'Cause if you think about just my development alone, it's five hundred and seventy-three houses, and that's just at the Lancaster Road. So just Lancaster alone, if I try to get out of there, I have like three or four points of contact with that train. If it's derailed, if something's happened, I can't get out. My only, my only option is coming back through this way and trying to get up to like Spirit Lake area, but I'm stuck if that's if that's the case. So I guess, you know, just another item to think about as you're going through whatever you guys are doing with Voldemort, um because the people will be stuck, and then, you know, heaven forbid, people are stuck in their cars on the roads, and they're all dying because we didn't think about this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none. Moving on. Seven A, this is an action item, consideration of the Hayden Homes Aristad zoning map amendment rezon request.
Mr. Mayor.
John.
Uh, as previously discussed, I have recused myself from this discussion, so I'll be stepping away.
Okay. Um as such, Emily, um I questioned and still continue to mill over this, um the the issue of a quorum. With only two council members present to participate in the vote, how is that compliant? And what, is there a statute that um that addresses that?
Um, so we are required to have a quorum for conducting business under Idaho Code, um and as long as the quorum is present, um which means John Hodgkins is still here, the quorum remains, and even if though he has to recu- he is recusing himself, um we still have council members that are able to vote, 'cause the quorum is still present. So a quorum is not necessary for voting, or, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Joe. Sorry about that. The quorum is not necessary for voting on this particular matter, um but it is necessary to be able to just conduct business at a meeting in general.
So it'd be similar, as if I would abstain my vote, be kind of the same thing, right?
Yes. I I believe there's been um meetings in the past where other um voting members have had to recuse themselves, and I believe there's been land use matters where we've only had one um voting member vote on matters. I was not here for that, but I've heard about it, so.
On, uh, pardon me, um, August twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, uh, well, it was a week prior to that, the Planning and Zoning Commission um voted on a recommendation for approval for an annexation, it was the Henderson Farm Annexation, four members of the commission recused themselves, so there was only one member available to vote on it. So that action was voted and approved by one member, who was subsequently appealed uh to the city council on the twenty-seventh of August eighteen and upheld because the quorum was present and that left the one voting member under state law.
So you can understand the public's um view of that, you know, I mean, it was so-
I can understand it, but I didn't write the law.
Understood, okay. I I'm still questioning this. Um, I go to Trustee Old Chat GPT, is a quorum, uh, if, is a quorum established if more than half is not able to participate? And it says, no, a quorum is not established if more than half them able are not able to participate. What is a quorum? Minimum number of members required to be present in order to conduct official business in a meeting, this is typically defined by an organization's bylaws, govern governing rules, uh but by default, um under Robert Rules of Orders, which we don't officially follow, but we mirror a lot of. A quorum is a majority, more than half of the total membership. An example, ten members, a quorum is typically six. If only four members um are able to participate, no, no quorum exists. Uh without a quorum, official decisions cannot be made or voted on unless um exceptions are stated in the governing rules. Um, so asking a clarifying question, what if half is recused?
They are still present, right? Okay. Oh, sorry, I thought you were gonna-
So what if half is recused? So asking Chat GPT a follow-up question, what if half is recused? And it says, if half of the members are recused, whether a quorum is established depends on your governing rules, but generally, key principles, quorum is based on the total number of members, not just those eligible to vote unless your rules state otherwise. Recusal due to conflict of interest usually do not reduce the number required for a quorum. An example, your board is ten members, five are recused due to conflict of interest, that leaves five able to participate. If your bylaws state quorum, majority of all members, you still need six, no quorum. Um, if your bylaws state a quorum, majority of all members, so if it states majority of all members, Emily, could you provide an example where that is the case, is that a majority of all members are required for-
Appointments, for example, is something that Idaho Code requires a majority of the full council for voting on appointments.
Um, if your bylaws allow a quorum to be based on non-recused or present members, then five could be enough uh for the quorum to be met. Best practice is check your organization's bylaws or rules or procedures. Um, if it's silent or ambiguous, many groups follow the Robert Rules of Orders, which does not lower the quorum due to recusal. So, I mean, I I question this, I'm sure that many of you all are as well, um I've sought legal counsel, um I, it's still puzzling to me. Um, a quick search of the internet seems to suggest that that's, that's the process, which I'm I'm surprised by, but I'm satisfied that that's apparently what the process is. Um, I'm tempted to make a statement here. Um, I, um, John's recusal appears to be related to sharing of um a a news article and um of this proceeding or an announcement, or was, what was it that he shared specifically?
I don't believe that his recusal is related to just those two particular ex parte actions that were not put on the record or cured in a timely manner that they were supposed to be cured. I believe it was um kind of accumulation of actions taking place on a Facebook page that he is an admin of, an administrator of. The issue with that, him being an administrator of a Facebook page, is that he has the um ability to read, comment, share, or and or delete things that are on said Facebook page. Uh, there were required a few posts about this land use action on that page, and so without knowing what he had access to, it would violate or potentially look like it is violating the applicant's due process rights to have a fair vote from Counselor Hodgkins because they have no idea what information he received or didn't receive or potentially deleted or shared via that Facebook site.
So you're saying it's not just those two posts? Okay. And then I saw there was reference of, I I didn't understand that it was pertaining to the overall overarching that he's involved in a Facebook group, but I thought it was specific to just those two, sharing of, I think it was a news article and I wanna say it was a a council meeting or something?
There was um a news story and a news article.
So it was one from a TV and one from the-
Right.
The newspaper.
Okay. Um, I I don't think that John had any ill intentions, um I don't think that that matters in the eyes of the court. Um, I think that John represents the citizens, um the community, and I think that the community here is supportive of John.
Yeah.
That, uh, so, uh, that's my two cents. Um, moving on. Uh, staff, the, your presentation, I guess, are you guys starting this?
We don't really have a presentation, this is the applicant's request of reconsideration. Um, we will just say that the applicant is here to present tonight, uh, we are still within the land use process, there was a flow chart made available to the public tonight so that they can understand that we are just on another step within the land use process, um the reconsideration request. Uh, depending on how this stuff goes, a judicial review could potentially be next, uh and it would still be within the same process. So it is just provided as information on what the process entails and where we are in the process. Uh, if you, do you want us to put that up on the board?
If you would, please.
Okay.
Why is the public not permitted to speak at this proceeding?
So the public, in the state code, the state code allows the public testimony to be included in the record at specific points in time. Those specific points in time are public hearings. Um, they do this in order to protect the applicant's due process rights. Um, and so they app- the public has a chance to provide testimony, the applicant has a chance to rebut said testimony, and then the council or voting body then deliberates on said information that has been received. If you allow public testimony outside of the um procedures that the Idaho Code has allowed, um then it's off being offered outside of a closed record, um as deemed closed by Idaho Code.
Could this uh issue then be scheduled for a public hearing, um to allow the public's participation?
I would be hesitant. I'm not saying no, but I'm not saying yes, it kind of depends on why you would want a public hearing. You cannot prolong land use actions unnecessarily or unreasonably, um because that, again, violates the applicant's due process rights. Um, they have a right to a certain process, we have a process uh in state code, we have a process listed in our city code. If there's no um avenue to create a new public hearing because there's no um need, there's no change in the application, there's no new information that's been presented, then I would hesitate to say that it would, it's, it's something that should be done.
Counsel, any questions? For staff?
Oh, I have no questions.
Statements?
I have a statement.
If you'd like, I don't know what it is, but-
Okay, thank you. I'll I'll try to be brief, um and try to explain this whole, this has been a very difficult process.
This audio is terrible, we can't-
You can't, my, they said my mic was bad.
Think it's your beard that's, oh, no, it's not, you're you're below.
Is this okay? Is that better?
No.
Okay. Just plug in this mic.
We can try it.
Just, yeah, well.
More batteries for that over there.
Here. Try, try that. Thank you. That any better? It's my gravelly voice.
Sorry, folks, there's a new audio system that we've installed here.
So where I'm going with this, this this whole process is, this whole process has been-
Does this work better?
Yes.
Try that.
This whole process has been extremely difficult, and it shouldn't have been. This was, it was pretty well, this is pretty well cut and dried. Um, Leon, can you put the, the property up on the, on the uh screen for me, please? First, I wanna, I wanna address everybody here. You're our citizens, you're our people, you all have First Amendment rights, and I respect those. Um, some of them have been over the top, but that's okay. Some of them have been false, some people have been falsely accused, things of that nature, that's okay. But when you people sitting here, I want you to understand one thing. When you, when you address us and say, we don't listen, everything you've told us has not fallen on deaf ears, we've listened to every word you've said. But we have an obligation to protect our city, we have an obligation to about the nearly thirteen thousand people that live here, and we're looking at roughly fifty that have been coming in regularly, and I respect that, and I respect your opinions. But we have a due process we have to go through, and this whole thing is not about five hundred homes. It's about rezoning a piece of property from industrial to residential. And you'll see up here on the property, there's three lots there, and the criteria for rezoning lots is they have to meet traffic, they have to meet water, and they have to meet sewer. And these three lots have done all of those three things, and we are obligated by law to follow the law, and you have a flow chart there, and as you can see, we should have approved this the first time because of of how the process is written. Now, the young lady earlier that read my quote uh said that I was cheering this on. I am not cheering this on. I'm doing what I'm obligated to do. And when we had our public hearing, we had to change our hats, and we had to become judges, and that was the quasi-judicial thing that we were doing. So we had to look at this at a legal concept and a legal matter and follow the law to the T. And Hayden Holmes and J U B have crossed their t- crossed their Ts and dotted their Is correctly. They've presented everything, they came back after we denied that, uh Councilman Hodgkins was asked on his, on his denial, when he made the motion to deny it, he was asked if they came back with all of the traffic criteria, which the only question, the only one in question was Lancaster Railway intersection. And he was asked if they met that criteria, would it be approved? And his quote was, yes, it would. And that's on our May fourteenth hearing, and you can watch it online if you'd like. That being said, then they did their due process, they came back and asked for a reconsideration to the city council, which is their legal right to do and our legal right that we need to hear it. So we approved that last meeting to reconsider it. So now we vote tonight on that reconsideration. And if we deny it, then the next step, as you can see in the flow chart, they very likely could take it to court. And and based on the, based on the information that is presented, we would probably lose in court because of, they've gone above and beyond, they're gonna give money to fix the roundabout, they, if you look at the whole, if you look at the whole thing that they presented, they've gone above and beyond their call of duty to try to do things for the city. And that being said, I want you, all you people to know that I care about you and I care about our town, but we are, we are in a position here, we're only talking about rezoning this, this isn't a subdivision. It's potentially going to be, but that's a different process at a different time. This meeting tonight is a rezon for this piece of property, and all the criteria has been met, and I appreciate your opinions, but that's the law.
Please, guys, Emily, um, if I could, um, I am concerned. Uh Larry has just spoken uh prior to the applicant.
Your microphone.
Sorry. Thank you, guys.
I didn't, I thought they were going to, I didn't think they were going to speak. I didn't, I thought they were going to, I didn't think they were going to speak.
I believe they are. Is the applicant presenting something?
The applicant can present something, yes. Typically, they present their request to you, but this is the action item, it is a deliberation time for you, so as part of your deliberation, if you would like the applicant to present their request to you, you can. If you've read it and understand it and don't have any questions or anything about it, you don't necessarily need to. We've done requests where we've had them present, we've done requests where we haven't had them present, so we have no set way on how we do this.
Well, mine was a procedural question, and my procedural question is not met if that's the case, so I'd give the opportunity to the applicant to present if he would like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You do intend to, please? If I could for just a moment, then that does cause my procedural question. Larry has just indicated a mannerism in which he may intend to vote, or though it seems, does that preclude him from participating in the vote because he has stated a prejudice of a way that he is voting prior to hearing the information that is being presented?
The information has already been presented to him in the packet.
Okay.
This is the time for deliberation.
Yep.
Yeah, if he presents his part of that.
Very well.
I didn't play my card.
If you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, Michelle Fulgham, land use attorney representing the applicant. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for your time, for your consideration, your seriousness with which you have approached this thing. I understand it's not easy to sit through these things, they're complicated issues, but we are appreciative of your due diligence and the seriousness with which you have focused on your role in applying the law. I was going to start with the directions this counsel gave last time regarding, these are the actions you as the applicant can take in order to obtain approval. And I'll get there, but I'm going to shift gears just momentarily because it might be helpful to know that the reason this case is different is because quasi-judicial matters trigger property interests which are protected under the U.S. Constitution, Fifth Amendment, prohibition against taking, regulatory takings, and the Fourteenth Amendment. We all know life, liberty, and property are protected under the Fourteenth Amendment. You can't be deprived of your life, liberty, or property without due process. So Idaho is a very big private property state. The government cannot over-regulate what we can do on our private property, and Idaho robustly protects. When I own or control property, I can do what I want on that property within the bounds of the law. And the constitutional protections that we keep talking about, these due process considerations, they are so that Fifth Amendment constitutional violations do not occur because if there is a Fifth Amendment constitutional violation, that is a regulatory taking. If the government imposes regulations, over-regulates a personal, a property interest, that Fifth Amendment protects the property owner, and they're entitled to compensation for their real property that's suffered a regulatory taking by the government agency. Regulatory takings, very expensive, millions of dollars in this case. So we have the Fifth Amendment protection of property rights, we have the Fourteenth Amendment protection of property rights, and that triggers the due process. Idaho law is very clear. It's like a judge telling the jurors, and we hear this all the time, you're the fact-finders in this case, you're making the decision. The jurors are told by the judge when they leave, "Don't talk to anybody about this case, don't watch the news, don't read anything, you're restricted to the evidence in the courtroom." This is quasi-judicial, so you're restricted to the evidence in the public hearing. That's why things, that the applicant, who has a constitutionally protected property right, when things are shared with the decision-maker on Facebook, even if the decision-maker doesn't respond, they just see it. That triggers a due process violation because the applicant with the protected property right, they don't know what that is. They haven't seen it. It hasn't been put into the public record as an ex parte communication to know, "This is what the decision-maker saw, is it true, should it be rebutted?" Due process requires notice and the opportunity to be heard and rebut that. We didn't have notice of what those comments were, what was said, what was shared, and we didn't have the opportunity to rebut it because it's not in the record. Wasn't really going to go into that, but it seems like it might be important information. Oh, and I forgot to mention, Idaho Code 675253 is the code that prohibits ex parte communications. It's been repeatedly upheld by the court. Idaho Code 675249 states that the agency record in the public hearing context constitutes the exclusive basis for agency action. Now, getting to where we left off in this case. At the conclusion, oh, also, there have been three public hearings already. The planning and zoning public hearing in December of 2024. Everybody come in, state your objections, full public disclosure on the record. April, this is April 9th, full public hearing. Everybody come in, state your objections on the record, present your documents. We had to do it over because of the notice problem. May 14th, full public hearing on the record. There's been more than the legally required number of public hearings three times. So now getting to what... At the conclusion of the last public hearing pursuant to Idaho Code 676519 subsection 5A 5C, the law requires that when a governing board, planning or zoning commission denies an application, it shall specify the action, if any, the applicant can take to obtain approval.
Michelle, could you move closer to the microphone? I think that might help, the audio.
Oh, I thought that made it worse, actually.
I think he's turning it up to try to capture you, and the farther you get away from it, the more it's picking up the speakers.
I'm doing everything wrong.
You're borrow mine.
The action that the council instructed to the applicant pursuant to that code section that the applicant could take to gain approval was very clear. Fix all of the items identified in the traffic impact study. Traffic has been robustly debated in this record. You have hours of testimony about traffic, you have documents, there's no need to reopen the record, there's no need to take new evidence. We know what that testimony, that evidence is about traffic. And the instruction was, fix the items in the traffic impact study. Specifically, the applicant should clarify the applicant's intent regarding traffic mitigation measures and should explicitly state the improvements the applicant is voluntarily agreeing to implement. We've done that. In response to that directive, sorry, I have this weird summer cough. I apologize. In response to that directive, we took the traffic study. Most of it had already been agreed to, but I want to go through it because it's important for the record. First, on page 24 of the traffic study, Lancaster and Railway intersection improvements. On page 24, the traffic study states, "In order to improve the Lancaster Road-Railway Avenue intersection with the implementation of proposed development, the eastbound and westbound approaches will need a two-way turn lane. The eastbound approach will also need a single right turn lane." That's a traffic study mitigation. Pursuant to the directive from the council, we have contractually agreed in paragraphs 1.2.1 to implement that. Paragraph 1.2.1 states, "All traffic improvements at the intersection of Lancaster Road and Railway, which include the creation of a multi-lane turn lane, left turn lane for both eastbound and westbound Lancaster Road, as well as the creation of an eastbound Lancaster Road right turn lane approach, shall be constructed, or the funds that would be used for said improvement shall be paid by the owner developer to the city prior to the final build-out of the 400th residential home." That's a contractual obligation, and that 400th build-out, that also comes from the traffic impact study on page 24. Page 24 of the traffic impact study says, "400 residential units, 85% is the sensitivity analysis that triggered that." So we followed the traffic impact study for the Lancaster Railway intersection. Next, Meyer-Nagle intersection improvements. Traffic impact study on page 24 states, "In order to improve the Nagel-Meyer Road intersection with the implementation of the proposed development, the northbound and southbound approaches will need a single left turn lane. The southbound approach will also need a single right turn lane." The traffic impact study analysis was adopted, accepted, and agreed to by the developer in paragraph 1.2.2, which states, "The traffic improvements at the intersection of Meyer Road and Nagle Road, which shall include the creation of a left turn lane for both northbound and southbound Meyer Road, as well as the creation of a right turn lane for the southbound Meyer Road approach, shall be constructed concurrently with frontage improvements of Meyer Road or upon the final build-out of the 400th residential home, whatever occurs first." So that traffic impact study, adopted, agreed to. Three, vocal road and Meyer Road frontage improvements. Development Agreement Contract, paragraph 1.2.3. "The frontage improvements for vocal road as well as Meyer Road shall be constructed concurrently with the adjacent residential or commercial property. It's customary for frontage improvements to be completed as the development encroaches on the roadway. Frontage improvements are defined as roadway widening to meet the Rathram Transportation Master Plan, ultimate roadway cross-section adjoining half-wit-only, adjoining roadway drainage, swales facilities, street lighting, landscaping streets, trees, adjoining pedestrian facilities, sidewalks, pathways, and adjoining roadside curbing. All frontage requirements shall be completed in accordance with the City of Rathram's code." The fourth requirement from the traffic impact study dealt with mitigation for traffic impacts at Nagle Road and Railway Road. "The extension of Nagle Road and Railway Avenue through the development shall be constructed concurrently with the adjacent residential or commercial property. All improvements shall be completed in accordance with the City of Rathram's code requirements. The complete roadway cross-section for Nagle Road and Railway will be required to be constructed as a condition of the development approval. We voluntarily consented and agreed to that in paragraph 1.2.4." Five, the fifth traffic mitigation is the Hiawatha extension. Paragraph 1.2.5 is contractually obligates the developer as follows. "The extension of Hiawatha Lane adjacent to the development shall be constructed concurrently with the adjacent residential or commercial property. Said lane shall consist of a functional two-way lane with the complete west-half roadway section. All improvements shall be completed in accordance with the City of Rathram's code requirement." The sixth traffic mitigation item was addressed in the traffic impact study on page 23. This one, the traffic impact study did not indicate that the developer was initially responsible for this. The city had already planned to upgrade this intersection, it was already at a low level of service, not because of anything this developer is doing, but it's already below the level of service. And the traffic impact study states, "The analysis indicates the intersection of Lancaster and Meyer is operating below acceptable level of service at the southbound approach without the development. It's understood that the intersection of Lancaster and Meyer was identified as a deficiency in Rathram's 2022 capital improvement plan. A roundabout is already planned for that intersection." And here's the key language from the traffic impact study. "The city's planned improvements to upgrade this intersection to a roundabout will provide adequate capacity at level of service." So the city's already solving this problem pursuant to the traffic impact study, but because you directed in an instruction under Idaho Code 676519 subsection 5C, actions the applicant could take to gain approval, fix all the traffic items, the applicant has gone above and beyond the traffic impact study statement, and in paragraph 1.2.11 of the development agreement, the developer agrees as follows. "The developer agrees to contribute 10% of the construction cost to the city for the single-lane roundabout at Lancaster and Meyer Road up to a maximum contribution of $150,000. The roundabout contribution payment shall be paid to the city prior to the final build-out of the 100, much, much earlier than the 85% in the traffic impact study, 400. This is triggered at 100. All other standard impact fees, traffic circulation impact fees shall be paid as a condition of every building permit." Everything in the traffic impact study is agreed to in the contract. And because that was the requirement under the Idaho Code provision, take these actions and you can obtain zoning approval, we're seeking and we're entitled to zoning approval because we've mitigated all of the traffic impact study items. It wasn't part of the directive at the conclusion of the last hearing, it had already been agreed in the prior two public hearings, three public hearings, but I do want to point out that the development agreement does incorporate your other wishes. I mean, I told you from the very beginning, and I tried to be transparent. My job here was to hear what you wanted, listen to the conditions you wanted to impose, and my job was to find a way to draft them into a document. You wanted to tie commercial growth on the industrial piece to residential development. Your code doesn't allow you to do that, it exceeds the scope of your authority, it would be unlawful, but we contractually agreed to it. Paragraph 1.2.7 and 1.2.8 voluntarily require the applicant to develop the commercial and the industrial in phases with the residential. Prior to the city issuing building permits for any homes beyond 50% of the residential homes, 25% of the industrial area shall have applied and been issued certificate of occupancy permits. 1.2.8, prior to the city issuing building permits for any homes built beyond 75% of the total number of residential homes, 50% of the industrial area shall have applied and been issued certificate of occupancy permits. So those are two conditions you wanted, your code doesn't allow it, but we voluntarily consented and agreed to them. The final one, we have the mixed ratios of the density, but the other thing that's in the contract, again, which your code doesn't require, but at 1.2.10, is the developer agrees 5% of the total residential units constructed within the project shall be designated and maintained in perpetuity as workforce housing units, with a preference for teachers and staff employed by Lakeland School District. This requirement shall remain in effect unless otherwise agreed by the parties. But it's in the contract, it's going to be, if this zone change is approved and the contract is recorded, it attaches to the land, it's like a lien or encumbrance, and it's in perpetuity, and if the land is sold or transferred, this development agreement is an encumbrance that rides with that. So my point is, even though these things were from the prior public hearings, my point is you're getting things in this contract that your code wouldn't require, that your code wouldn't give you the authority to do. And as your counsel indicated last hearing, if the zone change is not approved, then those conditions go away. They're dropped, they're not something that would be binding anymore under the development In conclusion, if there is a sticking point, if there's language or numbers... In conclusion, if there is a sticking point, if there's language or numbers or concerns of how we've followed your instruction, applicant, go solve the Traffic Impact Study items in order to obtain approval. If you have sticking points or concerns about how we've done that, now is the time to let us know. Because we'd rather hear about that, address them, than have you have a concern, vote no, whatever, for something that we could solve. And so if you have any concerns or any language or any numbers concerns, the team is here to address that. Otherwise, because we have met the conditions that the applicant could take to obtain approval under Idaho Code 676519 subsection 5A, we're entitled to the zone change approval. And we respectfully request that you grant it. Do you have any questions?
I have three points that I'd like clarification on. You mentioned, if I kept tally of the traffic improvements that you've agreed to pursuant to the Traffic Impact Study, if I'm not mistaken, there were five articles that you had cited. I believe there were two additional that the city engineer had indicated in his memo. I did not hear those addressed, and if I missed that, I apologize. Could you clarify that?
We have agreed to six items. Number one is Lancaster Railway Intersection. Number two is Meyer-Nagle Intersection. Number three is Bocal Road-Meyer Road Frontage Improvements. Number four is Nagel Road and Railway Road Extensions. Number five is Hiawatha. And number six is a Lancaster-Meyer Roundabout Improvement for 10% up to $150,000.
Do you know what the seventh item was that was not included?
I don't think there was anything in the city's memo that we didn't do.
Kevin, am I misunderstanding that? Went there five and then there were two additional?
She thoroughly named all the items that we thought were different.
So I'm misunderstanding. I believe that there was five that was in the original Traffic Impact Study.
I didn't have anything above and beyond what she just summarized.
I think maybe, he may have broken out separately, frontage improvements for Bocal and Meyer.
Okay.
And I combined those because it's the same frontage improvements that are obligated under City Code.
Or I called out for railway to be extended and Nagle to be extended. That could have been an A and B.
And we put them together as extensions.
Yeah, I just recall her being...
As in the Traffic Study right here, extension of Nagel Road is one item, extension of railway is a second.
Thank you. So there isn't an item that's missing?
No.
And there was originally seven? There was five and then two additional from Kevin.
Yeah, seven.
Okay.
By our count, everything we've been asked to do, we've done.
She has summarized all of our expectations.
Just wanting to make sure, thank you. The second item that I was unclear about is you'd mentioned the percentages. The zoning requested pursuant to Rathram City Code is mixed residential. It requires a percentage, I forget the numbers off the top of my head, I want to say it was 25%?
A third, a third, a third.
No, what the... It's a mandatory third of the small lots, a mandatory third of the median lots, and up to a third of the lots.
Okay. Just wanting to clarify that in your application that you are, the conditional or the voluntary agreement is for a third, a third, and a third?
Yes, sir. Paragraph 1.2.9. "The rezoned mixed residential property shall have 33% of the lot sizes between 6,500 and 7,500. 33% of the lot sizes shall be between 7,500 and 10,000. 33% of the lot sizes shall be greater than 10,000 square feet intermixed throughout the project with a variation of what, 1% of each of the variations?"
And last point of clarification that I had.
Was there a question there?
Yeah, one last point of clarification, for me anyway, that you'd indicated that your request for reconsideration as just presented was in regards to the, that the applicant has fulfilled and met the requirements that were stated as conditions to receive approval. Yes?
Correct.
Okay. So not, and I don't know that this makes a difference, not that they had met the criterias, the three criterias in previous applications. It's not, it's not an appeal of that. It's that there were conditions that were imposed and that the applicant is voluntarily applying for those.
Well, I mean, it's basically saying the same thing. The initial application is we qualify for a rezon because the city can only impose what's in its code, and its code has three conditions. Number one, that there's no detrimental effect on collector and arterial streets. Number two, that there's water and sewer available. And number three, that it's an area appropriate for R1, R2, R3 mixed residential. So we qualify, we met all of those things. The council said, "We want you," we deny, "and we want you, in order to obtain approval, take the following action, fix the Traffic Impact Study items." We came back and said, "We fixed the Traffic Impact Study items." So we've never given up or changed from, "We meet all three of the criteria under your code, no detrimental impact of traffic, water and sewer, and then mixed residential, a third, a third, a third." We've always said we met that, but your instruction was go fix traffic, and it was just not one thing, and we fixed the traffic. So now we're entitled to approval.
So Emily, I'm seeking clarification. I don't know that this matters, but I see two paths that, on a judicial review. One is that we met the criteria, one, two, and three. And two is that we voluntarily complied with the requirements. Does it matter that, is it important to note that what's being requested is that we have met the requirements that were placed upon us that said that if you meet these criterias that you may, you may be granted approval of your project? Does that even make a difference?
Probably not, so right now, no. I agree with that, it doesn't make a difference.
Counsel, any other questions?
No questions.
Michelle, thank you for your being forthcoming and explaining all this, because I, I was trying to say that same thing, but I'm no legal eagle and I, it was hard for me to decipher how to address that. You met the criteria on your application already. You guys have gone above and beyond the call of duty, the extra money for the roundabout and all the procedures you've given to the, you've already put in there, you're giving to the schools. You guys are trying, you know, the 5% of your, of your housing for...
Workforce housing with reference to the school district employees.
So I do have a question, though. I think a lot of people think these houses are going to show up August 1st. I hear that kind of, you know, it takes a long time to build houses. And I, I think Eric mentioned that we're, they're probably not even going to break ground for up to two years, maybe, by the time they get all of the stuff. I realize that's probably not your department, maybe perhaps, but...
Well, your instruction was follow the Traffic Impact Study, and the Traffic Impact Study is calculating 2033.
Okay, so eight years. When you're...
For the, for the initial triggering, the initial, they call it the sensitivity analysis of when the 85% 400 residential units would be triggered.
I'm not following you there, so clarification, because if I'm confused, I think somebody else might be too, that what you're saying is that there's criteria, a sensitivity, that if, when that 85 percentile is, is met, and I believe you've identified that at 400 residential homes that are built, when that is reached, that that triggers these other things that need to be completed or initiated. Is that correct?
It's probably best, because I'm not a traffic engineer, that I just read what the expert witness wrote. And the traffic engineer reports state, Traffic Impact Study states, "In order to improve the Nagel Lane-Meyer Road intersection with the implementation of the proposed development in 2033, the northbound and southbound approaches will need a single left turn lane, southbound lane will need a single right turn. The Traffic Impact Study also states, 'In order to improve Lancaster Road-Railway Avenue intersection with the implementation of the proposed development in 2033, the eastbound, westbound approaches will need a two-way traffic turn lane. Eastbound approach will also need a single right turn lane.'" And then at the conclusion, because we adopted the Traffic Impact Study, it states, "The sensitivity analysis was performed to determine how many lots can be built before the mitigation is required. Analysis showed that all of the industrial zone 100% plus 40 residential lot, 400 residential lots, 85% can be built out before mitigation at Nagel-Meyer Road and Lancaster Road-Railway Avenue are needed." So we followed this TIS report pursuant to the directive of the council.
Okay, and I may need help, Kevin, but I'm trying to understand, does this mean that that doesn't have to be improved until 2033? Or does this mean that that doesn't have to be improved until the 400th home is built?
Good question. Well, obviously, the more homes that are produced at that time are going to trigger when those type of activities are needed to maintain our level of service on our roadways and intersections. So they're saying that when they bring in trips to put on our roads, those are the moments when it's projected that those new cars will be on our city streets. So phasing, I mean, we've all seen phasing that have always been, you know, hey, this can be done in eight years, and it gets done in five. So that's a little bit of an unknown. We've also seen where we've said, hey, there's going to be, you know, four phases and it's going to be completed by this year, and they didn't come anywhere close to that. It fell off because of, you know, economical forecasting and all those good things, the circumstances at the time. So it's a little bit hard to say. I look at it from the Traffic Impact Study and compare it to our Transportation Master Plan and say, here's our existing conditions, here's our 2045 mitigation requirements to satisfy our 2045 populations.
So I feel like you're dancing around the answer that I'm looking for, and I know that you're not meaning to as the engineer in you.
But I am.
But what I'm, what I'm asking, what I'm asking, if 400 homes are manufactured, built, and occupied by, say, 2029, before the 2020, 2033 date, are they required to make those improvements?
No.
No, it's triggered, it's triggered by the 400.
Okay. So if, okay, so then that helps me with one point. Now, if the 400th home isn't built until 2040, are they required in 2033 to make those traffic improvements?
I've understood that the trigger is the quantity of the number of homes.
So regardless of when that occurs?
Not the fiscal year.
And that's legally what's required, because you have to mitigate the impact you cause. And if you don't cause the impact, you don't mitigate it.
So I'm, I'm trying to understand the 2033 date in relationship to the percentage as to when that will occur, and that's what's ambiguous to me right now.
I think...
Wasn't that just a projection?
Based on the Traffic Impact Study. And I'm told that the Nagel-Meyer improvement probably happened in the first phase.
Okay.
Within part of the frontage improvements.
I'm sorry, Ramon, is that...
Part of the frontage improvements.
The frontage improvements in the first phase. So it could be as soon as...
Just part of the constructability is probably, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Much earlier than what the Traffic Impact Study is saying then.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Can't, sorry.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
I think I will, counsel.
Has anybody tried to cross aid that you wrote?
Sorry, we can't, sir. Counsel, any other questions?
No questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Mary.
That we vote to reconsider the rezoning of Hayden Aaron's staff zoning map, who approved their rezon request as per...
So to clarify your motion, that you said to vote, your motion needs to be an affirmative, what it is that you're making a motion and then the vote is?
I said to reconsider their application for their rezon request.
This, this hearing, this is a reconsideration, so you're either needing to make a motion to approve or to deny?
Excuse me, approve the reconsideration request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good enough for the motion?
I would probably add a condition on your approval, that they formally sign and record the presented development agreement to bind them to all of the voluntarily agreed to conditions, if you want to add that to your motion.
Do I need to say that, or is what you just said, okay?
Mayor?
You can say so moved.
So moved.
So there is a motion?
Because all of the criteria for the denial has been met, I will second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Lorraine, would you please take role?
Mayor Sanders?
Yes.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will now take a five-minute recess, returning at 6:59. We will now take a five-minute recess, returning at 6:59. All right, it is 6:59, I'll call the meeting back to order. Okay, we are back on the record. B, this is an action item, consideration adopting an ordinance to amend the zoning map for Around the Lakes zoning map amendment.
Mayor, counsel, at the, I believe it was the May 14th regular meeting, you voted to approve the rezone, the Around the Lake Main Street rezone, rezoning this property from residential to commercial. This property is at the end of Main Street, within the Main Street Downtown District, do you remember that property? So this is just the ordinance that formalizes that zone change, so it will formally be commercial moving forward.
Counsel.
It is an ordinance, so.
Mr. Mayor.
John.
I make a motion that the Around the Lake Main Street rezone ordinance be placed on its first reading by title only, under suspension of the rules, and waived at second and third readings.
A second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Lorraine?
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Larry Sanders?
Yes.
Motion passes. Where did my bookmarks go? I hate this.
Right side.
That's a, oh, it says adder doy, okay, there we go.
Don't be $150, my word.
252, Mayor, page 252.
Thank you. Motion passes. An ordinance of the City of Rathrum, a municipality, a municipal corporation of the State of Idaho, providing that zoning for approximately 0.27 acres of real property currently zoned, medium-density residential R3, shall be rezoned to general commercial C1 classification, providing for amendment to the official zoning map to reflect this change, adopting findings of fact, providing for conditions of the rezone, providing severability, and providing an effective date hereof.
Mr. Mayor?
John.
I made a motion to adopt the ordinance to, of Around the Lake Main Street rezone.
Motion made.
A nice second.
And second, any further discussion? Lorraine?
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Larry Sanders?
Yes.
Motion passes. Third.
Mr. Mayor?
John.
I make a motion to adopt the Around the Lake Main Street rezone ordinance?
Third motion.
Third motion, sorry, I make a motion to approve the publication of Around the Lake Main Street rezone by summary only, and incorporate the title of the ordinance into the body of the summary.
Motion made.
A nice second.
And second, any further discussion? Lorraine?
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Larry Sanders?
Yes.
Motion passes. C, this is an action item, consideration of the Calvary Rathrum conditional use permit.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, gentlemen of the council, this action, as was stated, is for the Calvary Rathrum CUP 2025. This is not a public hearing, CUPs require one that was held at the Planning and Zoning Condition last week. Let's see here. This is a request for conditional use, being the construction and operation of a church or place of worship on property zone industrial. This property is identified as lots 1 through 3, block 3 of the Ryback Industrial Park. Ryback is currently waiting for final approval and accepted by the Council of Infrastructure. So I have set a condition of approval on the CUP. If it is approved, that they can't commence until the infrastructure for the subdivision and final approval for Ryback itself has been done. The comprehensive plan land use designation from the property is actually medium-density residential. This was the property that was subject to green grass rezone, which was denied. So, and we have not yet adopted a new future land use map, amending that. So it's medium-density residential, however, the property is zoned industrial. Title 67, chapter 65, is the land use, or the Local Land Use Planning Act. So part 35 of that states that approval or denial of any application of land use action is to be based on express standards and to be in writing. The approval or denial of any application required or authorized pursuant to this chapter shall be based upon standards and criteria which shall be set forth in the comprehensive plan zoning ordinance or other appropriate ordinance or regulation of the city or county. Such approval standards and criteria shall be set forth in express terms and land use ordinances in order that permit applicants, interested residents, and decision makers alike may know the express standards that must be met in order to obtain a requested permit or approval. So for a conditional use permit, there are eight criteria. Those are actually set forth in Rathrum City Code 1557. I'm going to go through each of these criteria one at a time. One, that the conditional use permit will constitute a conditional use as established in this title for the zoning district involved. On this slide, we can see a portion of our land use table, Rathrum City Code 1553, which shows that churches or places of worship on the left, the industrial zone at the top, and where those two meet, there's a C in there identifying that this is a conditional use in the industrial zone. So number one appears to be met. Number two, it will be harmonious with.
If I could interrupt, I'm sorry, the sign is not permitted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I didn't even see it.
I just caught it out of my, continue, please.
So this action, or this conditional use permit, will be harmonious with and in accordance with the general objectives or with any specific objectives of the comprehensive plan and or this title. I have provided code analysis and have reviewed the comprehensive plan. I do not see any discrepancy between any general or specific objective in the comprehensive plan or of Title 15 in regard to this application. Number three, it will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services. Public utilities exist in Nagel Road and the newly developed Carley Lane. Public services, including fire police and EMS, are already provided to the property. That's been incorporated since about 92, I believe. Item four, that it will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such use will not change the essential character of the same area. There are some houses across Nagel to the south, and this area isn't developed at all, will be the first structure put in here. It will be developed in compliance with Rathrum City Code 1563, which is commercial, industrial, and institutional development. It will provide non-industrial use at the subject location, which will provide some screening from other uses, industrial uses in the area, and those residential uses to the south. And we found no indication that approval of this request would change the essential nature of the area. Number five, it will not create excessive additional requirements as to public cost for public facilities and services, and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. I was unable to determine or to find any additional requirement for public cost for public facilities or services. However, there was testimony offered at the public hearing of planning and zoning regarding Title 23, Chapter 9, which is the retail sale of liquor by the drink. This is state code, which prohibits the sale of alcohol within 300 feet of a church or a school. And this was brought up by property owners adjacent to the subdivision, not adjacent to this property. So what I did is I, because it's not mapped yet, because the subdivision isn't complete, I georeferenced a paper copy of the plaque into our GIS system, so I can show the location of those lots, which is shown in the upper left there. And then I did a 300-foot buffer on those parcels, which is shown in the bottom right. So as we can see there, there are residential properties south of Nagel. Can't sell liquor in those properties anyway, because they're zoned residential. You have properties located in this general area, which is the Ryback Plaque. The owner of that plaque has signed off on this application, so those are considered taken care of. So there is one property, which is the property to the, to the west of this, that would be affected with not being able to sell alcohol. However, the property is undeveloped, we have no applications for development, so there is no negative impact at this time, because there's nothing there.
Has that property owner been made aware of this condition, that maybe?
He was mailed the stuff, and I mean, I'm not sure, the family that brought up this at the public hearing said they were family members of him. Basically, they were there, it was the Canning family, who I believe are related to, are there, who owns that parcel. They said they were there to represent him as well, so I believe so. Number six, will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, and conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or their general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. We found no indication that the operation of a church at this location would cause any of those effects. Number seven, will have vehicular approaches to the property, which shall be so designed as not to create interference with traffic and surrounding public thoroughfares. That subdivision has no direct access to Nagel, so all of their traffic will be moving northward onto Carley Lane, and then coming out south on that subdivision onto Nagel, but no direct access from the lot itself will be provided. And eight, will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of a natural, scenic, or historic feature of major importance. None of those three items was identified on the property. So that's our express standard statements again. You have my staff report, my analysis of the property, my memo to you guys, the recommendation from the planning commission, and I don't have anything else.
Counsel, any questions?
I do, James, thank you for all of that. Early on in your, what you were talking about, you said something about Ryback was waiting for approval?
Yes. This property is located in what's, in the Ryback Industrial Plaque, which has been approved by council, but we're still waiting for the acceptance of the infrastructure. We got some inspections and some paperwork, some warranty stuff that hasn't been turned in yet.
The plan of that hasn't been recorded yet.
Right.
Okay.
And they can't subdivide the property, that they can't sell it with the right lots, 1, 2, 3 legal discretion, because that hasn't been created until the plaque has been recorded. So we can't record the plaque until we've accepted the infrastructure, and this can't start until those items have happened. We can't start building on those sites.
So, okay, okay, thank you for.
Because they'd be hooking up water and sewer that isn't accepted yet.
How soon a process is that going to be, do you know?
Any time when they.
Quite possibly your next city council meeting. They've completed all the construction to our satisfaction, now it's a paperwork thing, getting that for city council.
So that's been, they've been, that's what they've been doing on the property now, is getting it prepared for, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
John.
James, the only thing I'm concerned about at this point is, you said that a possible relation of the, a family that was adjacent to this objected, did they, did they object?
The, no, the person who owns that one parcel wasn't there, nor turned in a letter or any commentary relating to himself. His family members stated that they were representing him.
Okay.
But I have no indication that that was actually true, it's just their word.
Okay, and they were objecting to it?
Yes.
No, that's not what I understood. What you, what you said, there was a person who made a comment about alcohol sales not being permitted on adjacent properties.
Right, their argument, including their own property, even though they didn't seem to understand, they were further than 300 feet away from the subject property, was that that church is going to come, cause an economic hardship by preventing alcohol sales in this area.
Okay, and then from that comment, that there was a member that was present, a person who was present claiming to be a relative of the property owner to the west, the, I thought you said they were not in objection.
Yeah, and I don't know if we can see the GIS map, so it's a little more obvious. Is that all right?
Okay, so on this map in the upper right, the people who came in and testified at the public hearing owned this property to the north of the entire subdivision. I gave a rough measurement at 778 feet from this parcel boundary to their parcel boundary. By the state law, only is 300 feet.
Gotcha.
Whereas they said they were there to represent several property owners, which, one of them, they said, referenced specifically, was the owner of the property that is, would be encumbered by that restriction.
So they were representing them, and they were in opposition?
Yes.
Simple motion?
Yeah.
All right. I think I'm going to follow the advice that was given to us earlier by Matthew Sherman, seek God first. And I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the Calvary Rathrum conditional use permit 2025.
A second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Lorraine?
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
Larry Sanders?
Absolutely.
John Hodgkins?
Yes.
Motion passes. D, this is an action item, consideration of authorizing a mayor to execute professional services agreement. Mr. Deuce? Kevin?
Mayor, members of the council, first, a statement. Groundbreaking for the sewer and water and the internal public roadway infrastructure for the Rathrum City Hall campus project is scheduled to break ground this Monday. The reason why that statement is important is this professional services agreement relates to that particular infrastructure work. So the relevance of that is, see, that's why there were. The relevance of that is, this professional services agreement is a third party who will oversee some materials testing to verify compaction efforts, materials quality, those type of things. I will want to point out that we are in the process of working with this consultant to remedy their indemnification part of the professional services agreement. It came in, the revision came in today, and so I don't want to speak out of turn and say it's legally acceptable. It's probably not fair to Emily to ask if it was legally acceptable, because I didn't send it to her till 5:15 this afternoon. However, there is a, an importance with regards to trying to gain acceptance and get them under contract so they can actually be there to witness the work that is going to take place this Monday. So. I will leave it at that.
Kevin, this agreement is for roughly $20,000 to be, to be paid by the City of Rathrum?
Yes, sir.
Why would this not be inclusive of the general contractor? Why isn't that a responsibility under that contract?
We had discussed that with the general contractor when we went through our contract negotiations, and we felt that at that time, it is best to have that independent party working for us instead of working for the contractor. We didn't want the Fox to oversee the hen house analogy type of situation.
So what my concern is, is that there was a not-to-exceed price that was set with the general contractor for the construction of City Hall. But if there are things that are going to be occurring, nickel-and-dining us outside of that contract, why, if at the very least, wouldn't the general contractor be responsible for the, the expense?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I can say to that is, yes, you are correct. You can get nickels and dimes on especially big price-ticket projects. I will say that we are the owner of the property. We are the ones who are in the process of advancing the subdivision of the property. We had very specific conversations with the contractor when we negotiated their scope of services with them about this very specific item. And this was the relationship that we felt best served project.
Are there other services that are anticipated to be rendered outside of that general contract?
You will see a similar professional services agreement once we get into the actual building construction element of this project as well. But beyond that, I don't foresee anything that involves the Ratham City Hall campus efforts. For instance, the plating efforts. We hired Stratton across the street to handle our plating efforts as the registered licensed professional surveyor on the project. But no, I don't foresee anything. However, I'm not speaking towards the parks plan development.
Sure, and I would say that the parks plan development is not inclusive of the general contract that, that we entered into. But the general contract indicated that that's a, an overarching umbrella that includes everything for the development. And so subcontracting, that, what my concern is, is that where this is a contract that's outside of the scope of that agreement that we made. And there was a price that was not to exceed. And so here we're seeing expenses that are outside of that contract that makes it easier for them to stay within that contract, in that dollar amount. But it makes it more difficult for the city to stay within that budget. Is what my concern is.
Fair point, and I don't really have a good rebuttal other than we did specifically talk about, talk about this particular topic and who would be responsible for overseeing this very specific effort on the materials testing element. And we felt as the city, after conversations amongst the group and getting feedback from our consultant on it, that this was the best avenue to go to. So when you asked, do I foresee anything else coming? No, other than probably this exact same scope of services work for when they actually get into around and do the parking areas and the building construction of those type of things. There will be a similar materials testing type professional services agreement or an addendum to this particular.
So this is. This will need to be repeated again. Other than, than this, these material testing, one and two, that there's no other things that have been carved out to say that the city will retain responsibility for these things in the general contract agreement.
No, sir, not that I'm aware of. Unless there is financial obligations with trying to extend dark fiber or fiber optics into property, that I can envision anything that may start creeping outside of the scope of work or anything that may be advanced security on this building. But I don't foresee any of that.
Would that, sorry, would that even be a cost on us or would that be for the fiber provider?
Mr. Mayor and council, I've been working on, on the fiber aspect of this, and we're trying to put it into the fact that we wouldn't have any additional costs in, in laying the conduit or running the fiber lines. Our contractors that we're working with, we will be trenching for utilities in this project. And once we have that window, when those trenches are coming in, any fiber optics that we are working with currently right now, I've got three companies that have made some commitments that, and we haven't picked any of them yet. But they are willing to lay the conduit in at no expense to the city. And then when it's ready to go live, they would run the fiber that they needed to run. So I'm not foreseeing any additional costs. We did have one group that was saying you'd have to pay to bring it in, but we're changing things around. We won't have to do that with this one. So that's, that's on my side of this project. And not, I do not foresee any additional expense except for our monthly expense on fiber.
I, I think my only concern at this point is it was the indemnification. Kevin, is that what you said they sent?
We had, they had prepared the original professional services agreement, had indemnification clause in their professional services agreement. Our city attorney struck probably sixty percent of that particular clause because we can't indemnify them, all that good stuff, as a government agency. They have provided revised contract language for that. And that's where I'm, I've indicated that I haven't given our city attorney ample time to review that, to see if it meets our expectations.
And John, if I may, part of the motion could be that to authorize the mayor to sign on the condition that legal has approved the indemnification clause. And the only reason why I put that in at this particular time is because work will be starting next week. So we want to make sure that we don't end up delaying that. That ends up costing us more money and that increases our bills.
Emily, is the portion that you struck a portion that struck out in eight of the professional services agreement? So at the top of the page?
What page are we on in the?
Two sixty-nine.
I'm sorry?
Two sixty-nine.
Okay. Yes, that's where I struck out the notification, the portion of, yes. That was, that's my strike struck, struck in through.
There's a comment that's included here. It looks like it was written by you.
Yeah, I gave them language to include instead that we would be able to agree to.
Kevin, you don't know if that was the same language that they proposed back?
I can't verify that, Mr. Mayor. I, I didn't get their revised agreement till a little bit after five today.
Emily's pulling it up right now, Mr. Mayor.
I'm confident to say we can get there. I just, that's just not my expertise.
Sure. Emily, is it reasonable to ask for a review of that now or is that something you need more time?
Just a quick look. It looks like they did replace the, what I struck out with what I asked them to replace it with in the amended version, Kevin, just to see today.
So I'm okay with making a motion to authorize this with legal review?
I'll second.
Was that a motion?
I, I.
Didn't sound like it.
Let me make one. I would like to make a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the, or to execute a professional services agreement with All West for City Hall construction materials testing with the exception that the city attorney review the indemnification, section eight, to make sure that it meets our legal requirement.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Checking with legal first. You, you're okay with that as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. No further discussion. Lorann?
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Lady Sanders?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
E, this is an action item, consideration authorizing mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Inland Forest.
Okay, so I got back today from having some time off away from work, so I apologize. Can we continue this item? We had given them red line comments back and just haven't seen the corrected version of the contract. I, I would have mentioned at the beginning, but we were kind of focused on another item that was on the agenda, although that, so I apologize.
Counsel, a motion to table?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to table item seven E, which was the consideration of authorizing mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Inland Forest Management for Forest Land Surveying and Consultant Services for Ratham Mountain.
Motion made. I will second and second. Any further discussion?
Is this a time sensitive thing?
No.
It's not?
Well, I mean, it could be, but we're, we're fine.
Okay, okay.
John Hodgkins?
Hi.
John Hatcher?
Yes.
Lady Sanders?
Yes.
Motion passes. F, discussion results of the Ratham speed studies.
How speedy are we, Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, council, and Mr. Hodgkins just explained that I'm on a time limit on this particular item. So the fall of twenty-three, we purchased two different speed monitors, brand new piece of the plate. We had to learn about that and, you know, how to deal with the software and make, have it make sense. Needless to say, we have collected speed measurements for a good duration of time on a variety of different streets within the city of Ratham. Now, from that variety, we did some handpicking at the very beginning of the speed stuff. And the reason why the speed stuff is important is because statutorily, we are required to post speed limits in accordance with Idaho Code forty-nine, six, five, dash, four, which is basically the rules for setting a maximum speed limits. We, as a city, have traditionally had speed limits that differ from those statutory requirements. So in order to validate the reasoning for us to have different speed limits than those statutory required speed limits, we would have to conduct individual speed studies for that. So we initially, as you're aware, city council had seen my memo about cherry picking some of the easy items that we consider to be high hazard, special conditions type roadways. Those roadways that are in front of schools, that are adjoining parks. If they're in like the downtown Ratham area where the pedestrian population could be, you know, higher than normal on different times. So we established speed limits for those special zones. We are allowed to do that by Idaho code as long as we recognize what those conditions are. We have done that. This is the second step. The second step was we wanted to get into predominantly single-family residential neighborhoods and try to validate our posting of a twenty-five mile per hour maximum speed limit instead of the statutory required thirty-five mile per hour speed limit. I don't need to explain the difference between ten miles per hour when it comes to traveling on, you know, residential streets. Seems like a no-brainer. However, we are required to validate our reasoning for that. This is the discussion matter on that. We had conducted speed limits on the most conservative or what we would deem the highest travel speed roadways within sever, seven different single-family residential neighborhoods. And from that, we took the cumulative, we did statistical analysis of those speed limits and determined that the eighty-fifth percentile speed limit for that on those roads, when you combine them all together, was twenty-four point nine miles per hour. So we're validating the posting of our twenty-five mile per hour speed limit signs within our residential neighborhoods with this particular study. Now, obviously, this study has a lot more narrative than that. However, I'm on a time limit. We can go over as much as you individually want. But that is the gist of what we've been doing since the fall of twenty twenty-three. It's just taken time because of limited staff conducting all this work in the timeframe where we can do it. And obviously, the roadway conditions. Because we had to do it in conditions which allow for free-flowing traffic, un, basically uninhibited by any, any traffic restrictions whatsoever, which basically means you're going to have to be free of snow and ice and those type of things. So that knocks out a significant time period of when we might be able to do our speed study work. So I've provided a map. I've provided a table, which is basically an exhibit, which shows the average speeds, the max speed we saw on these residential roads, and then the eighty-fifth percentile speed. I've commented in the report the importance of the eighty-fifth percentile speed because sometimes that is a misunderstood point of conversation. So what I want to do is I want to bring this to the city council, bring it up for your discussion to make sure that my report and our, our logic and our approach is meeting what your expectations are. They are certainly, certainly meeting what my initial expectations were. Actually, they've gone a little bit above and beyond because I think we've captured the better, a bigger component than what I was thinking we would be able to capture by this timeframe. The next step would be for us to finalize this report and then, you know, basically adopt those speed limits for residential areas.
Kevin, eighty-fifth percentile, can you just break that down a little bit about what that means?
Yeah, and I'm going to read to you, Mayor, on that. The eighty-fifth percentile speed, the speed at or below which eighty-five percent of the drivers travel on a roadway segment. The speed at or below, which is eighty, which is what eighty-five percent of the people are driving. Motors traveling above the eighty-fifth percentile speed are considered to be exceeding the safe reasonable speed for road traffic considerations. So if you get the one-off where you're getting some knucklehead who gets a brand new car, wants to travel ninety miles an hour down a residential street at one particular time, we're going to capture that speed. But we're also going to recognize that it's a little bit outside of the bell shaped curve that we're looking for on statistics. So what the eighty-fifth percentile speed is, is it is the commonly adopted nationwide acceptable percentage for adopting speed limits. It's one of those that the traffic engineers will say that is what we hang our hat on. Anything we do with engineering design elements is all based upon driving behaviors. The equipment that is being driven on roads, that goes from designing of horizontal curves, you know, vertical curves, all those good things, roundabout design parameters, it's all based on driving behaviors. And that's where this eighty-fifth percentile speed comes in.
So it's eighty-five percent of the vehicles, what their speed is. And so like you put all of the speeds that are recorded and then eighty-five percent of those, that everything from there down is what's considered?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
So. Go ahead, Andrew.
John?
Oh, okay. Kevin, so I, I'm looking at the map, which is excellent, by the way, and, and great work on this overall.
I wish I could take credit, but I didn't prepare.
Whoever did, good job. The, so I'm looking at Bakel Avenue, right, and, and average thirty-six on one side?
The beauty of that, Mr. Hodgkins, is we're not talking about Bakel Road in this paper.
I, I saw that, but my, my question is, would a natural conclusion be that there would be an increase in the speed limit on Bakel Road to forty-five?
Potentially. The conversation becomes, one, is there something we need to do to mitigate those speeding concerns in the form of making traffic calming type adjustments to the roadway, adding curvature and whatnot, alignment corrections, those type of things, you know, maybe ups and downs, who knows? Not speed humps, James.
Come on.
Yes, but those, those are things that would calm the traffic, make the lanes shallower, not wider, to promote slower traffic, travel speed, adjustment marking, those type of things. You can do that, or, as you indicated, you could adopt those speeds as your maximum speed limit.
That seems excessive in, in that area.
That's why I tried to give Mr. Hodgkins.
Yeah, no, which is, yeah, which is, which is good, that there's alternatives, right? That, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean that we would need, this doesn't prove that we need to raise the speed limit, is my point.
Correct.
Right, so even though eighty-five percent of the people are going, you know, between Thayer and Wright Street going forty-five point three miles an hour, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to raise it from the thirty-five that we have it now.
That is correct, but we would have to identify what avenues we're going to take to cure lowering the speed.
Okay, so if we choose not to cure it, then it would be raised the speed limit to forty-five?
Yes, and that's where the statutory requirements come in play.
Got it.
Yeah, I got an idea.
I will say that, no, you're right. I'll, I'll leave it at that. I was going to see if it met one of the categories that's defined in Idaho State Code that talks about statutory limits, but it doesn't.
Okay.
Kevin, does that mean that if someone were to receive a traffic citation for exceeding the speed limit in that location, that this, this traffic study has identified that the eighty-five percent is? that this, this traffic study has identified that the eighty-five percent is forty-five miles an hour?
What allows us to be legal in the enforcement of issue of those traffic tickets in these single-family areas?
But does this, does this expose or identify that on Baco, um, in particular, just as an example, that the traffics, the speed study doesn't support the posted speed limit and therefore traffic citations issued for those speeds could be, uh, I don't know, overturned in court?
If I may jump in, not necessarily, because the state has already set a statutory minimum speed of thirty-five miles an hour. Where the traffic tickets were getting questioned were traffic tickets for twenty-five mile an hour speed limits because they were below the thirty-five minimum. So there is a state already determined minimum speed limit is thirty-five. I'll let Kevin work on the engineering side, but.
So it's not because, it's not the, the maximum, it's a minimum threshold, and because we're below that, that's where this is required. Thank you, that helps a lot.
So I see on Main, going uh east back behind the soccer fields, that it appears that these cars are going nearly thirty miles an hour. I thought that was twenty.
Well.
And then it's fifteen were.
Larry, remember, the council adopted that as fifteen.
The whole, that whole road, okay.
Because of the relationship, the fact that we're adjoining basically a parks area, John Brown Plainfield, Heiko Fields, school zone, that met our, what we call special conditions.
Okay. I travel that road a lot, cars do move fast.
There, some can, for the most part. And the one thing that, that was really nice that came out of the speed study on the residential stuff, people respect the law. I mean, they're twenty-four point nine miles per hour is what we did on statistical analysis and we're posting twenty-five miles per hour. Good for them. They're acting responsibly, it appears like, for the most part, um, in these residential areas. And so they are, that is what is being told, is the driving behavior is telling us that they want a twenty-five mile per hour road, and that's what we provide.
And where they speed, they really speed?
Yeah, some of these are.
Well, the other part is some people really want to get to work fast and, yeah, I can.
Well, I mean, the city shops down there. What are you saying, Kevin?
I'm not saying it's a utopian society.
Counsel, any other questions? Staff reports, Jody.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor and counsel, included in the packet are the.
I got punished with you got it too.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and counsel, included in the packet are the monthly financials as of May thirty-first. I'm here for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
John.
Sorry, Jody, where are we percentage-wise with our budget for the year?
Um, it's on the second page. Uh, there's the total. Uh, right around thirty-three percent of our expenditures, forty-seven of our revenues.
So we're expecting some pretty big stuff to come through in the next three months?
Well, I mean, we're not even halfway, yes, we're, I guess we're almost, well, we have our last quarter to go through. So, yeah, we're, we have our final uh tax payment to come through. Um, there's, yeah, there's some pretty large uh revenues coming in.
Okay. Thank you.
A visitor commented another opportunity to address the council. Seeing none.
Can I say something?
If you'd like to come up to the podium, please.
I don't wanna stir any waves, and, and I'd like you to think I'm not picking on you.
Could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Harold Bobian, one-five-five-three-three North Stevens Street.
Thank you.
Like I said, my early comment, I, I was born here. And so I don't know if you remember me talking to you on the street here when we had Halloween, whatever you were. And the reason I voted for you is because you were against all this huge growth.
As you saw tonight, I didn't have a vote.
And, and I know that. But I feel disappointed that the rest of you can't see that and vote your conscience. You know, there's right and wrong, yes, there's legal, and yeah, we have a right to do this. But I question, did any, this impact study of traffic, have you ever tried to cross Meyer and Hayden at eight o'clock, six o'clock in the morning? Can you imagine four hundred more cars trying to funnel down that? Have you been to the post office? I don't care what time of day it is, just trying to get to the post office. Drive down forty-one past the school. Where are all these four hundred people gonna go?
So Harold, it sounds like you might be slightly speaking specifically to the, the project.
Sorry. I'm just voicing my opinion.
It's already voted on.
It's already voted on, you guys do what you need to.
Hold on, and let me explain. Um, the reason that that's still a concern is that there's statutory requirements as far as appeals and things like that. So, um, as, as if we've learned anything up to this point, is that, um, just because we've made a vote doesn't always mean that that's the final say, that there's still uh limits. And so once that has expired, then that makes that final. Rites of due process, courts proceedings, things like that, there's still, uh, that, that timeline has not completely closed yet.
I have one last comment.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna address it to you, Larry. You made the statement that, you know, there's not very many people here, and maybe we're not the majority because there's not that many people here. But I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot of people at work and can't contend, attend these meetings. That doesn't mean that that's the, the consensus of the majority of the people.
Totally, totally true, but again, I, I.
I'm not the rich Californian people retired here.
I represent the whole city of Rathrum, and I have to take that into consideration, you know? And I appreciate your comment, you're right, you're right, so.
I'd like you to respect that.
Absolutely, I, and I thought I stressed that.
Some of us still work.
Yeah, I thought I stressed that, that I.
You wouldn't know that driving around all day long, I, you'd, you'd swear nobody has a job around here anymore. And I'd like to know where their money comes from because I don't have that luxury.
I love my town, okay.
I love my town too, and it's changed. This isn't the town I grew up in, and it's not for the better.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else that would like to address the council in the back there, please?
Hi, I'm Stacy Howard. I live at six-six-four-three West Harmony, and I'm also a lifelong north Idahoan. I, our family's on our sixth generation of Idahoans. For me, I, I moved to Rathrum about eight years ago. So, uh, for me, I've got to see the difference in, uh, from growing up here, I, you know, played sports at the gym. I ran on the track. I grew up here, um, which gives me kind of a different perspective of the new people just moving in. Uh, for, for the last eight years, the biggest thing that's changed is, is it's no longer quiet here. It's not. The, the, the skies are no longer dark. It's not quiet. It's no longer the peaceful, calm community. It's like a madhouse just going to get milk. It's like, okay, I got to be brave to go get milk, and it shouldn't be that way. It's Rathrum. You know, we, we are a good-hearted, loving community, and we're losing that. And you can see that in the hostility and the frustration and the, just the, the feeling of the environment that we come into in this place. It should be fun and joking, and everybody should know each other's names. It's no longer like that. Um, so for me, I am a, um, licensed clinical social worker, and I've been a social worker for twenty years. And part of my training is to do research and, um, policies and, and help out communities. And although I'm a horrible public speaker, um, I did some research on this, and I, I know that I came last time, and that was a horrible, horrible meeting for everybody. Um, but we talked about having a moratorium on building and what it entails. So I thought, well, I can't suggest that without doing research, so I did. Um, and there's two different types of moratoriums, and I'll give you this paperwork after I'm done. Uh, the one is an emergency one, which, uh, we enacted with COVID. That's something that if we had to protect our, our citizens, right? The second one is, um, one that allows people to stop and think. And I think that's what we need to do. We need to stop and think. We need to do assessments and research and figure out where we are as a community, because the thing that's lacking. We can see the difference, we can feel the difference, but we need to have the numbers and the statistics that back it up. And I hope that people agree with that. So in the paperwork, it says that we can do the second one. And I found, um, moratoriums that have been enacted in Idaho Falls. Um, Corlaine just enacted one for the historical society. So it is doable, and I hope that this council researches it and thinks about it because it's not about stopping this building being built. It's about where we want our community, how we want it to look, how we want it to feel. Our schools are obviously being impacted, and in all of the statutorys, they all say the main thing to look at is the schools. And we're not doing that. We are to a certain extent, but we need to more. So this isn't just about this building, it's about where we want to see our community. And we have the comprehensive assessment, which it greatly needs to be updated. But, um, with this, I hope that also we implement new criteria for building.
Stacy, I have reached a three-minute limit. I am curious, you mentioned an emergency moratorium, and you said another moratorium. Is there a specific title of that?
Interordance and moratorium. It is six-seven dash six-five-two-four in Idaho code title sixteen.
Six-seven dash what?
Dash six-five-two-four.
Thank you.
But I will give you this so that you can look at it.
Appreciate it.
You can get as much, and hopefully you can look at it and decide for yourselves. Because it, it does sound like it is doable.
I'm looking to it, thank you. Chris.
My name is Chris Story, uh, one-four-nine-o-two North Heather Street here in Rathrum. And I'll make it quick. I just, I think you guys are wonderful. I know you'd have to, um, do the hard things, but you're doing them. And I do think you have the people's, um, heart, you know, you know, and, and maybe you're thinking in the hindsight of what could be done, like the lady said, a moratorium or something like that. Um, the reason I wanted to come up here was to say thank you for being at that, um, police event that we had yesterday. That was incredible. It was just, you know, I mean, I couldn't believe all the community members that were there. And I know the three of you were able to make it. So thank you, because, uh, there's been years when the mayor was the only one that went to anything. And so you guys have already got the idea to get out and with the community, and we're pretty nice people.
We love you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else that would like to address the council?
Rick Pine, fifty-eight forty-seven Bedis Court. Uh, I just wanted to address a question about the speed studies. Can that be publicly put on the page so we can look at it as well?
Absolutely.
Because I would really like to look at Lancaster, if you guys did a study on Lancaster and railway.
The information that was posted, that was, that was included in the packet, if you go to the Rathrum, the Rathrum's webpage, Rathrum.gov, um, and you go to the agendas and you look at the packet, um, it's, it's included in that.
Okay.
Packet, so you can review the documents that, that we were reviewing as well.
Everything that's on the screen will be in that packet.
Well, I didn't see the study come up on the screen.
It, it was there.
No, John was.
It wasn't up on the screen.
Thank you.
It was not on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was, it's on, it's on the site, I'm sorry. Yeah, you were looking at the screen. No, it's on our screen.
Okay.
It's on the.
Railway is on there.
Mr. Mayor, once we finalize this, this phase of our speed study, we're not gonna talk about Lancaster issue yet. That's our next phase. I'll be glad to post that on the, on our webpage.
Cool. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none. Ten, mayor and council reports. John.
Uh, I'm gonna start with the fun stuff first. Thank you, everyone, sincerely for coming. You know, I, I know sometimes it's frustrating that you feel like you're not being heard. I, I, I can only speak for myself, but I, I suspect I'm speaking for the others when I say that you are being heard, we hear what you're saying. You know, the city is taking steps. Currently, the comprehensive plan is under review. If you go to the city website, Rathrum.gov, go to the government section, go down to public hearings, pending public hearings, you'll see in there, there's already a comprehensive plan section. Please, submit your feedback there. There's an email address that you can use. There is also a form you can fill out to submit your feedback, the things that you wanna see in the comprehensive plan, what does the city look like in the next twenty years? That's where you go and put that in, right? That's what's gonna have the biggest, heaviest impact. Okay, show up to the open houses. There was one last week, I believe.
Yes.
You know, at, at P and Z, there's going to be additional. Make sure you're showing up to those and envoicing your opinion. That is really what's going to form the future, right? That's what we as a council use as a guiding document for how we go about looking at city code and what changes need to be made there. So please, please, submit your feedback.
John, I just want to, we changed a link on the main page, those coins underneath the banner, to pending public hearings this afternoon, so there's a direct link from the main page to, to that other page. Uh, we realized people were having to dig through menus to get to it, so we simplified that.
Also, thank you, everyone who sent me emails. Um, you know, I really do appreciate that, taking your time to send those emails. They were all very thoughtful. Um, all of those got forwarded to staff, um, as part of, you know, that's, that's considered an expert contact. So I'm sending those to city staff that gets put into the record, um, so that your objections or, or even if you're for something, you know, those are noted and it gets into a legal way, um, where, where your voice does matter, so.
The community can also see those on the pending public hearing page, that those all get posted there. So any of the emails that we receive regarding land use items, that all of those are posted and available for, uh, public, um, inspection.
And now the fun stuff's out of the way. We'll talk about KMPO, um, which, uh, isn't to say it isn't fun, but, uh, updates that we got, uh, this month, I ninety widening, so eastbound and westbound, um, eastbound currently out to bid. Um, so that's the new expanded, um, over to ninety-five. Um, westbound will be out to bid in July. Also, uh, we passed the KMPO budget. Um, the budget actually decreased three-point-three-four percent for next year. So definitely happy to see that, um, you know, not charging people additional. The KMPO office, um, so I had discussed this previously. The building that the office resides in was for sale. Um, we were leasing the space. The board, uh, made the decision that it was actually more financially feasible to purchase that space versus continue the double-digit increase in lease that was expected over the next X number of years. So the city of Rathrum's, uh, share of the down payment of that, um, I, I don't know if we've seen that bill yet, but according to my notes was, uh, one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. That was part of the down payment, um, that we had to make in order to do that.
Just was on my desk today.
Oh, perfect. Um, and then if anybody is curious of the funding, um, that's four percent Rathrum share. The city of Corlaine by far pays the highest amount. If for some reason they had to sell that building, we would get that four percent back. So, um, in the end, everything should equal out. One of the things that I wanted to note was the Rathrum Prairie P E L study, which is what we're all used to seeing. So that was the Planning Environmental Linkage Study. Um, they've actually renamed it. It is now called the Rathrum Prairie Transportation Study. So if you've been following that, um, that's like the Hutter Corridor, right? All of the, all of the, the north bypass, so trying to get all the traffic off of Highway ninety-five and forty-one and get it around and going north, that's what that's concerning. So just note Rathrum Prairie Transportation Study is the new name. Um, and then the other note that I took, um, and this is kind of based on two different things. Number one, the KMPO meeting. Kevin, and then another one was, uh, it was actually a pretty highly-publicized article in the state of Washington, where they've been using Enric's data, um, in order to identify hotspots, um, within their cities. I don't know if we do that already. In the, uh, auspices of the KMPO, one of the things that was discussed was actually, um, approach speeds to intersections. And I don't know if that's something that we look at or have looked at and are going to look at for the new roundabout. You know, what, what are the approach speeds coming up to that, and does that factor into your design when you're looking at that to decide, okay, yeah, this is kind of how we need to design that? But from the police perspective, I thought it was. But from the police perspective, I thought it was pretty interesting of being able to identify these areas proactively where people are consistently speeding above a certain percent. So say above the eighty-five percentile, right? I knew Bakel sixty-seven miles an hour, right? If, if we know that there are areas that are specifically high speed, have we looked at that from a police department perspective? Or can you provide that information to the police department so that we can kind of emphasize those areas?
So, a couple of things, John. One, the speed measurement devices we have are recent items that we purchased. So we haven't always had access to this type of data. We basically focused on traffic counts before, not speed measurements. But yeah, we gladly share that with the police department. When we started getting some of the initial reports on our speed studies, yeah, our eyes popped open too on a couple. Some of these are ridiculous. And we shared those in our staff meetings that we had, which had the police department present there for them.
Yeah, and I know, you know, at least with the ENRICS data, which, you know, I believe is primarily vehicle manufacturer data. Surprise, your car collects anonymous data and sends it to your vehicle manufacturer, like how fast you're going and where you are and things like that. And all of that data gets correlated and then they sell that data, right? The KMPO is a consumer of that data. They purchase it. And then they use it for doing things like analyzing intersections. So what the level of service is, how fast they are. The dirty word is arrival on green. So if you, if you get to an intersection and it's green and you have to stop, that's like a major problem, right? That's, that something isn't working. Or, or worse yet, you're at a light stopped, it goes green, and then you have to stop at that same light again. I'm thinking of two lights on forty-one that it seems to always happen to me.
That's a different problem, yes.
But data like that and being able to use that data to be more proactive in what we do in the city, you know, is, is pretty exciting. And I don't know if that, if you can take that with your speed data and, and kind of combine the two to maybe formulate an even more accurate picture of what's happening within the city.
Anytime we capture traffic counts or speed measurements, we share that with the KMPO staff.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Kevin. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Larry?
I too want to thank our citizens for their passion about how they feel about our community. And it's all important. We're in this together, and I just want to thank them.
Next up on the agenda here is an executive session. To be open and transparent, this is in relationship to an open meeting law violation. There was an email that was sent to Mayor and Council. The executive session, as stated here, is related to that. It is a privileged topic. It's something that the council has to discuss. So with, with that, we are going into executive session, and the public is dismissed.
I got Mr. Mayor.
John?
I would...
Oh, sorry. Formalities.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
I got to get it open here. One second.
Jeff Kudelka?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. To make a motion to enter into executive session, per ITO code section seventy-four dash two oh six B, to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of, if you hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, or a public school student, and have to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. The mere presence of legal counsel at an executive session does not satisfy this requirement.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, any further discussion? Lorann?
John Hutchins?
Yes.
John Hodgson?
Hi.
Louis Hutchins?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we will enter into executive session.
Thank you, John. You built me out there. Appreciate it.
Okay, Mayor.
Hang on just a second. Exiting Executive Session back in regular session at 8:33 PM. Without objection, no city -- further city business before us without objection. We are adjourned.
Hey, I just thought of something.